Just a little bit.
So I think staff is good and I think we're waiting on Linda. So why don't we give a minute or so more if that's okay and then we'll begin.
What an exciting night.
I haven't received any texts or anything from Councilmember Mason if you wanted to get started. We do have a quorum.
And Javon, have you heard anything?
I have not. I believe, I know she will be joining.
No worries. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So why don't we go ahead and let me know when you're ready, Melissa?
I am ready whenever you are.
Thank you very much. All right. Good evening, everyone, and I'd like to call the San Bruno City Council's special meeting of July 30th, 2020 to order. May I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Here.
Mayor Medina?
Here.
I do see that Linda has, I'm sorry, Councilmember Mason has just joined the room. I'm bringing her in now.
Okay. If we can, if we could please rise and Mr. Vice Mayor, would you mind as to lead us?
Okay. Pledge allegiance.
Republic.
Thank you. Why don't we move on to public comments for items not on the agenda? If anybody wishes to have anything to say that is not on the agenda, we'll give just a moment and see if any hands go up. I'm not seeing any at this time, but just give it another moment or two. I am seeing none. So we'll go ahead and move on to item number four, study session. Status update on the community benefits program for the Bay Hill specific plan, options for council consideration. And at this time, I am going to recuse myself from this study session on topic, though interest and I will be listening. I'm going to turn the meeting over to the Vice Mayor and the reason for the recusal is my close proximity to the Bay Hill specific plan where my home and where I live. I have gotten what information I'm allowed to attain, but I will be listening. And Mr. Vice Mayor, I will not be rejoining the meeting. So sir, it is yours and good luck to all.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Bye.
All right. So we'll move right on to item four, study session. And tonight's topic is an update on the community benefits program for the Bay Hill specific plan and options for council consideration. So I will turn it over to the city manager.
Good afternoon, council and members of the public. Javon Grogan, city manager for the city of San Bruno. And it is my pleasure to provide you with a update on the Bay Hill specific plan and the U2 Phase One project. As many of you know, the Bay Hill specific plan begun with U2 approached the city in 2016. And the work on the plan kicked off in 2017. And it calls for revision for U2 and other property owners to expand the allowable office, potentially residential and retail square footage within the plan area. Tonight's presentation will be printed, will be presented by, in large part, Darcy Smith, our community and economic development director, and supplemented by Jason Moody, who is a principal at EPS, who has been supporting the city as a key member of our consultant team. The agenda for tonight, we will go over the objective. We will talk about the specific plan background. We will give an update on the EIR, the environmental impact report. We will then talk about two phases that are components within this specific plan. One is what is called U2 Phase One, a project within the Bay Hill Office Park. The next phase is outside of Bay Hill Office Park, but within the boundaries of the specific plan. And that is commonly referred to as 901 Cherry Phase Two. And we will provide an overview and an update on that project. We will next have a presentation of community benefits and various options for the city council to consider, next steps, council action, and then questions. Again, a overview of our objectives for tonight really is to give the city council an update on where we are, both with the specific plan and its components, the EIR and U2's planned projects within the planning area. We want to present to you two options with regard to a community benefits program. There is a staff recommendation for formulaic model at $35 per square foot for office within the planning area. And we would like to obtain direction from the city council on that specific item tonight. Just as a reminder, there is a robust team that has been supporting the development of this plan and working with U2 and other property owners, led by myself, the city manager, city attorney Mark Sacarano, Darcy Smith, our community and economic development director, Jimmy Tan, the public works director, and someone that should get a lot of credit for all of this, the principal planner, Matt Newbaumler, who's doing a lot of hard work behind the scenes. And several consultants, I will really only introduce three because they're here tonight and ready to assist the city council in any, with any questions. One is Elaine Costello from Management Partners. She has served as a project manager with Dan Marks, also of Management Partners. And then we have Ed Schaper, a principal with Burke Williams and Sorensen, a land use attorney that represents the city on a number of land use items. And actually, a fourth person, Jason Moody, the principal from EPS, who I talked about before. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Darcy Smith, our community and economic development director for the beginning part of the presentation.
Thank you, city manager Grogan. So I'll start this with a little bit of background. We may have some new audience members tonight who just need a quick background and refreshers since this is the first time we've been before you in a public meeting for almost one year. So a specific plan is a long range plan. It's nested under our city's general plan, which provides the blueprint for growth in the city. But the specific plan is sort of like a child and the general plan is a parent. And this is a focused area. You'll see, covers about 92 acres and it focuses on that area in more granular detail. And this area is largely an office park. The city's general plan has policies to promote infill in the Bay Hill Office Park with new professional offices and hotel uses. Other ancillary commercial uses are allowed and new office development is required to provide alternative transportation, such as the shuttles that are currently run by U2 and the other shuttles that go to BART and Caltrain currently run by commute.org, which are very successful. Specific plans cover the same range of topics that the city's general plan covers. In that document, they're called elements. But here in the specific plan, there's a chapter that covers the land uses and the development program, which is expressed in terms of square footage or units, which I'll cover later. There's focus design guidelines for this area and there are other topics that get addressed here, too. So as city manager Grogan pointed out, we're really sort of four years into this conversation with U2 for campus expansion that was again laid out in the general plan, which was adopted in 2009. And the city had conversations with U2 about participation in the specific plan to provide this comprehensive plan. These buildings shown here are U2's global headquarters. And the Bay Hill specific plan vision is laid out for a build out of about 15 to 20 years. And well, I'll talk a lot tonight about office space. I just want to emphasize that the Bay Hill Shopping Center would be maintained with the current retail square footage. It serves that neighborhood and the broader San Bruno community very well. That retail would not change and the only provision there would be allowed to, would be to allow extra housing. And the plan would also allow for newer expanded hotel uses, which is, the city council knows, is a really important land use to provide important transit occupancy tax revenue for the city. And based on feedback we've received from you that I'll recap, we would allow for housing. Housing is very important, especially when jobs are added. And important to note, housing is not allowed now. So this is a really pivotal land use change that we hope would facilitate that housing production and be recognized by the state when we are faced with requirements to zone for new housing through the regional housing needs allocation process, which has just started with ABA and MTC that you've been briefed on. So we started this process in 2017. I'll just remind you what we accomplished largely based on your direction. In 2018, we had two really critical study sessions where you selected the preferred alternative that I'll talk about tonight that's been analyzed in the draft environmental impact report. And you gave us policy direction on those land uses that I mentioned, such as housing. And you know, it was almost a year ago to the day that we were here back before you with an update. And we've been working on it every day since then. And you can see that this is a long process. This is ultimately going to be a four-year process. And here we are tonight. And again, we're getting really close to releasing that draft specific plan and environmental review, but we need your input on a key policy issue. Here's the planning area map. You can see the 92 acres here. And here's the property ownership map. And it's just important to pause here and show you all the properties owned by U2 and the Phase One sites. And now I'll launch into an update and overview for the specific plan and EIR. So as I mentioned, in 2018, you selected the preferred alternative and the amount of potential net new square footage, the office space, is 2.46 million. But important to remind you that you'll be able to consider the full range of environmental impacts, which are disclosed in that environmental impact report, and the mitigations for the maximum amount of build out. And because this is a legislative action ultimately that's before the council in the form of a general plan amendment, a zoning ordinance amendment, and this plan, that you have maximum discretion in deciding what levels. So here is a nice table that shows that square footage a little bit more broken down, as well as the retail and hotel uses and the amount of housing units, which is 573 units. So here's the draft EIR preferred alternative land use plan. And just important to focus on those hatched areas, which have the residential mixed use overlay for the Bay Hill site and properties along San Bruno Avenue, which is the most logical place to put the housing. Along San Bruno Avenue, because it's a great corridor down to our Caltrain station. And we've also seen interest in housing on the transit corridor sites in the vicinity of that. Sort of important to remember that offices like to be near other offices and housing kind of likes to be near other housing. And then mixed uses are generally successful in a retail and residential mixed environment, as you see at the shopping center. So again, your policy direction that you've given us, which we followed as we developed the plan, is to maintain the shopping center, allow for hotel uses, which again are very attractive for the city for the revenue, and allow housing. Other policy direction that you've provided over the years that I'll just recap quickly is open spaces important, that's publicly accessible, but privately owned and maintained. That relieves a burden on the city's general fund to maintain those parks. And as you know, we have other priorities for parks, such as Florida Park and the Recreation Aquatic Center, which is the focus of the city's revenue. And then keep Cherry Avenue open and treat it like a complete street. So improve the pedestrian crossings, improve the bike connections here. And a great deal of work has gone into designing those streets with those sort of new complete street modeling in line to accommodate not just vehicles, but bikes and pedestrians, your state of the art things, like bike lanes that are buffered from traffic and the crossings that you see here with the rectangular rapid flashing beacons, one of my favorite terms. So we've done a lot of work and what I want to pause here and just emphasize is that all analysis to date, all the studies we've done have indicated preliminarily that with appropriate mitigations and the payment of the city's development impact fee, which as you know, that program was developed last year to provide a revenue stream for really essential city capital facilities and infrastructure, that that level of development could be accommodated with the typical statement of overriding considerations done with environmental impact report and then appropriate mitigation measures. And this shows you kind of the breadth of many of those topic areas that we've been studying and working on for over a year now. So why can the city support this level of growth? Should the council choose to support it? Is because what we saw through these studies is that U2 and also other office tenants have very aggressive and successful TDM programs that take cars off the road and create other options, such as getting folks on Caltrain and BART. And that's been very successful. I realize I'll pause here and say that with COVID-19, it's sort of unknown exactly how that will continue. But I will say that there are ways to still accommodate shuttle buses with social distancing and Caltrain is still running and BART is still running and they're adapting their services. Also, Bay Hill's already a developed office park and so it can be modernized and expanded, as you'll see when I review the plans for Phase One and 901 Cherry. So the current status is that the draft specific plan and EIR are now substantially complete. And again, we're here tonight because we need your policy decision on a major outstanding item, which is the community benefits approach. That was delayed as a request, result of a request from U2 to release the plan without that. But we want to engage that conversation now and have proposed the alternative formulaic community benefit model that we would recommend be included in that draft plan. So now I'll cover the Phase One project. That's a development project that U2 proposed that's been concurrently processed. You can see that here, again, the Phase One project site, which would be proposed to break ground in 2022, or sorry, would break ground in 2021 and then hopefully be occupied by 2022, is shown here. And those are again on the parking lots of 900,000 Cherry, behind the existing office buildings that would remain. And then you can see that the project build out kind of moves from 280 down to El Camino Real. And there's five phases all the way through 2035. So that's shown here. And again, we've been evaluating that concurrently with the specific plan development. They were submitted in 2019 and deemed complete earlier this year. And that's for the new buildings, two of them at 440,000 square feet. And they conform to ordinance 1284, which requires a maximum of three-story buildings with completely underground parking garages. Other improvements that are proposed as part of this project would be multimodal hub that provides a centralized locations for those shuttles, which I mentioned are so valuable and effective to reduce the vehicle trips. The straightening and realignment of Grundy Lane and installation of modern infrastructure on Grundy Lane, including these white sidewalks that you see here and the stormwater treatments and street trees, which would grow well in those stormwater planters. And here's a rendering here where you can see that they're also in some places widening the sidewalks to provide a nice bench for respite and keeping on-street parking. Here's another rendering of the building, which you can see as a contemporary design here with steel, wood, and a lot of glazing to keep open up the buildings for a lot of light. Here's another rendering. This also shows this neat feature, a sustainable building feature, that shows the green wall, which is a cool thing, and then a bike lane on Grundy. So now I'll move on to 901 Cherry Phase Two. As city manager Grogan mentioned, that project is moving forward two currently. And you'll see those sites here. They're tucked away kind of just south of 380 and behind 901 Cherry. So they're kind of hidden, hidden sites right now, but you'll see them here on this map. That development agreement was originally approved by the city council in 1996 and an amendment approved in 1999. And that authorizes the construction of 287,000 square feet of new office space in two buildings. That development agreement states that the city will issue permits and approvals to build office buildings, along with the payment of the city's usual and customary fees. And the city is having discussions with U2 about the usual and customary fees and what those are defined as. And those conversations will be continuing. But to emphasize, under that development agreement, no additional community benefits are required. And a current status update, a true removal permit was submitted and issued effective July 27th. That's the first series of permits. There's additional permits currently under review by the city, including encroachment permits, demolition permits, utility relocation permits. And U2 has informed the city that they anticipate submitting additional permits for the garage excavation. There's a large underground garage here because again with ordinance 1284, there's no above-ground garages allowed here. And then we anticipate later applications for the vertical building permits for those two and three-story buildings. So now I will turn it over to Jason Moody, the principal at EPS, to cover the community benefits program overview and update.
Thank you, Darcy. And again, my name is Jason Moody. I'm a principal at Economic and Planning Systems. And I'm working on this process and this project for, well, since it started. So just quickly, I want to give a big overview of community benefits and then talk a little bit how it might apply here. Community benefits is a kind of a, is a term of art, this being, is a common practice increasingly, particularly in the peninsula of San Francisco and the Bay Area, to account for how cities might capture some of the value that they provide by creating new entitlement or new zoning. And typically, a community benefit is a voluntary exchange in which the, in return for an entitlement, the developer will provide some community benefits to the city that will, and it's a voluntary exchange. Obviously, the developer doesn't necessarily get the free entitlement for free. They can still do what they currently do. But in a community benefit, they agree to provide something extra in return for the entitlement. In San Bruno, the notion of community benefits is kind of premissed on the idea, this is a very big project. It will have a very big impact on the city, positive and some environmental and traffic type impacts as well. So the idea is that in exchange, that communities should get some benefit from that. Community benefits are not typically the same as required mitigations. And they're not the same as the types of things that impact fees cover. Impact fees cover required infrastructure. So community benefits are different because they're not something that is necessarily required for the project in order to go forward. And but at the same time, there's some ambiguity between these terms and we kind of show it here in the inner overlapping circles. Here, the city already has an existing development impact fee program and it covers transportation and a whole bunch of things. There's also some required mitigations that are unique to this site that aren't citywide that we have also identified. Those two things, if you, the impact fee is about $32 per square foot and your project mitigations are about 11.7 million for the entire site. As mentioned earlier, the community benefits contributions have yet to be determined, but we are recommending a $35 per square foot amount. So these numbers are again quantified here. This is all based on the 1.8 million square feet of net new office space. The exact amounts will, you know, be determined at the time of the permit. These are just estimates. So it's not clear how much will actually be generated. This is our best estimate at this time. As mentioned, we're now recommending a $35 additional community benefit contribution of $35 per square foot, which at full build out would be 63, about 63 million for U2 and another 4.7 million for non-U2 space, office space. And this is on office only. So obviously, if some of those sites were developed for residential, that would be different numbers here. This is just the office scenario. We would say that the residential community benefit requirement has not been identified or determined yet. It would most likely be significantly less than the $35 per square foot. Because office, I mean, because residential typically cannot, cannot support that type of burden and still be developed in a financially feasible manner. Just the current status of how we got here, and I think Darcy and Javon talked about this a little bit, but originally, the idea was that we would have a community benefit agreement incorporated into the specific plan as part of a development agreement. That, for a variety of reasons, has not come to pass at this point. So we decided the more expedient route would just to be define a formulaic approach to community benefits and definitely include it in the specific plan. So it's very clear to everybody at fault what the requirements are. So the two options before us at this point in time is one, to establish this formulaic community benefit, and we'll talk a little bit more how we got there, or to defer publication of the specific plan and EIR until the specific community benefits are negotiated where the U2 parcels only wouldn't apply. Each community benefit would therefore be a negotiated agreement, which can be a relatively protracted process. So that would certainly delay the process a little bit, if we point with option two. So again, the formulaic community benefit approach would basically be focused on the 1.9 million of additional square feet that are being authorized by the, by the specific plan. Now, the total development in the specific plan, as indicated, is going to be more than 1.9 million. But some of that is already, is already allowed under current zoning. So you really cannot extract community benefits from that portion because again, community benefit is a voluntary exchange between the developer and the city, where the developer is getting an additional entitlement in return. If the developer already has that entitlement, there's no reason for them to participate in a community benefit. There's really no leverage for the city to acquire that and it doesn't happen. Just want to talk a little bit about how we came up with the $35 per square foot. And I will kind of say that off the bat, that there's really no science behind this. We've studied community benefits and participated in community benefit agreements throughout the Bay Area, and they are all over the map. Here's a kind of quantification as best we could of somewhere as low as 13 per square foot to as high as $86 per square foot. But again, you need to remember that there's a lot of factors involved in terms of what, A, how do you monetize these benefits? What else do developers have to pay? What are they getting in return? So what's the underlying market conditions that prevail? All those things will affect what a realistic or a fair, so-called fair community benefit is. And because all those factors differ on a project by project basis, it's really hard to do an apples-to-apples comparison between one place and another place. So that's a very important caveat. But we kind of looked at everything that's, you know, all these factors and came up with our best estimate as what would be a fair number at this time. One particular proposal that we looked at or approved project is a very recently approved project, the Google Landings project in Mountain View, which was just approved very recently. And as you can see, they have the full end amount. The dark blue is their community benefit obligation. The light gray is their impact fees. And we weren't able to quantify their other mitigations for this project because they were not quantified very easily. So we haven't included those. There's some number who are not sure of this. This compares to the left on what, what San Bruno's total all-in would be, which is, we're recommending the 35. Now, you can see it's significantly lower than the Google Landings project in Mountain View. But I do want to stress, it's hard to compare apples to apples. One thing, for example, in, in, here in San Bruno is that you have a underground parking requirement. And underground parking is very, very expensive. And we just kind of did a quick quantification. And so underground parking in a sense could be viewed as a community benefit in itself. And the three spaces per thousand square feet is a higher parking standard that is in than the Mountain View one has, Google Landings. This alone accounts for about a $65 per square foot additional cost that's imposed on Bay Hill. So that's one of the reasons why we can't just say, oh, I'm going to go exactly with what they're doing in Mountain View. There's other factors, too. And then Mountain View's office market is a little bit stronger. So they can command higher rents on the finished product there, too. So there's a bunch of factors involved. Again, making direct comparisons are difficult. But so we think the 35 is a fair, is a fair number at this time. So how would this work? How would the existing community benefit work? You have a tier one, which is your existing base level onsite, what you currently are allowed to do. And tier two is everything above that. So the community benefit would say, if you're going to go to tier two, you have to participate. you have to participate in this formulaic process. It's a very clear process. We know what the number is. There are ways in which you can maybe get a credit for your $35 a square foot, and we outlined that in the staff report. There's a number of ways of providing a credit against that amount. But the monetary approach is very simple and clear, and allows us to pool the money and use it for important community, community facilities that, that we would use the money for. So here quickly is how this all breaks out. Right now, you have about a million, a little over a million square feet of existing office development in tier one, plus an additional 462 that's allowed that hasn't existed yet. And the tier two is that 1.9 that we talked about together. That's what would be, would impose the formulaic community benefit approach on. And I think with that, I'm going to turn this over to...
Hi, Darcy Smith, again, the Community and Economic Development Director. So quickly, I'll cover the next steps in the process. So as we stated, we're here tonight to get your input, to finalize the community benefits approach. However, we would need to do a little more work about the residential community benefits formula, since that isn't finalized right now. And then we would incorporate both of those items into the specific plan and finalize it. And we would complete the draft EIR. There's just one final step to ensure it's consistent with that final prepared specific plan, and we would continue the discussions with YouTube about the next steps to move forward. This summarizes the completion path for the specific plan and what's required for the council's final action, the specific plan, the EIR, and associated general plan and zoning code amendments. And this shows the completion path for the Phase One project, which includes a variety of planning applications and entitlements that would ultimately go to council for approval with the specific plan and draft EIR. And this shows all the steps. It looks like a lot, but on large development projects that go to council, these are pretty much the common steps where they go to the Airport Landings Commission and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the Architectural Review Committee, the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee, Planning Commission, and then ultimately the City Council, who has the final decision-making authority. And just important to note that we would also engage the community. As the council knows, we've expanded our community engagement efforts through modernized mailings, like our postcards and website outreach. And I will say, this is one of the things that we've been very successful with on this virtual platform, is that we're able to engage a lot of variety of the community and stakeholders. And so that's really important part of this process, to get the community input. And the total time is estimated at about six months. So under the California Environmental Quality Act, there are mandated review periods for CEQA that we can't alter, and there is some, some, just a long process to get through all these hearings and meetings. So just in brief, I'll summarize the current fiscal impact, just so the council's aware. I just want to emphasize that there's no direct fiscal impact to the city for preparing these documents, as the city will ensure that we are reimbursed for all costs to finalize the documents by the applicant, as is customary with a development project. And in closing, I'll summarize tonight's action. We have a request for you to provide us with direction for the desired approach for determining the community benefits with regard to the Bay Hill specific plan. And that concludes my staff report. We are all here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you for that report. That was a lot of information, and I really appreciate, I appreciate you getting it, getting us through all that very quickly. That was a lot of information, but it was a very useful refresher. And I understand from staff that the applicant has a representative that would also like to add some comments under, under public comment. And so I'm going to ask the council to hold their questions as we go to public comment and allow the applicant and any other commenters to, to address the council. And then we'll come back to council for any questions or clarification. So I will turn it over to the city clerk to handle our public comments.
Yes, Drew Sherwood, I am bringing you over now. Just one moment. Hi, Mr. Sherwood, can you hear us?
I can hear you, and I'm hoping that through the wonders of technology, you can hear me.
Yes, I can.
Excellent.
Whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Drew Sherwood, and I lead global real estate and workplace for YouTube. Over four years ago, I had the privilege of standing in a room full of San Brunans at the senior center and sharing with the community. At that time, Honorable Mayor Jim Ruane, the city council, and city staff, that YouTube wanted to continue to call San Bruno home. And I shared a vision that we wanted to work together with San Bruno to develop a project that wouldn't just build new buildings, but would create a place where San Bruno could thrive as YouTube grows. And that night, long ago in 2016, together, we initiated the Bay Hill specific plan. And if I could see all the attendees on this virtual call right now, I would probably recognize many familiar faces who have been on this multiple-year journey with us. And to those members of the community, thank you. Thank you for your participation in the many workshops hosted by city staff and the constructive feedback you gave to improve the project over these past years. To city staff under the leadership and guidance of City Manager Joe Von Grogan, thank you so much for your thousands of hours of work on the Bay Hill specific plan. And to Honorable Mayor Rico Medina, Vice Mayor Salazar, and the esteemed members of the council, thank you for your leadership to ensure that what was important to this community was always in clear focus. On behalf of YouTube, we support the formulaic direction that city staff have proposed in the staff report and in this evening's presentation. You know, as noted by City Manager Grogan and Community Development Director R.C. Smith, we have some work to do to finalize that formulaic framework. But YouTube is ready and excited to do that work. You know, most importantly, I said at the beginning of this process, over four years ago, that YouTube was committed to community benefits with the completion of the Bay Hill specific plan. And in the future, if council approves, we will have the vehicle to deliver on that promise. You know, it's also important to note that in addition to the community benefits, the development opportunities created by the specific plan will generate tens of millions of dollars of impact in affordable housing fees, hundreds of millions of dollars of local expenditures, and generate thousands of jobs across a wide range of industries. And while not a part of the forward-looking Bay Hill specific plan, we are eager to begin construction of the additional buildings at 1400 and 1450 Cherry, which will put thousands of people back to work in a myriad of construction and support jobs at a time when projects are being canceled or indefinitely postponed across the Bay Area. And additionally, it will deliver millions of dollars into our hometown right now. These are unprecedented times, and our communities are only more important as we support each other through this public health crisis. And one day, I look forward to meeting in person with all of you again when we reach the finish line on the Bay Hill specific plan. And until then, be safe, be well, and take care of each other. Thank you for the time this evening.
Thank you. And if I can ask the city clerk to continue with the, any other speakers?
Yes, I'm trying to bring in A. Warner. She's giving me a little trouble here, just one moment. Mr. Warner, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Warner. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you. Hello, Vice Mayor, City Council members. I'm Allison Warner, Vice President of Investment at Regency Centers. I believe that past meetings, I've been able to speak to most of you on behalf of Regency Centers, who owns the Bay Hill Shopping Center. I would like to start with thanking everyone for their hard work on the many years that have gone into this specific plan. I'm very happy to see the progression and the direction that has moved specific to our property. We're very excited about the potential of a long-term mixed-use opportunity and also happy to see that the YouTube-proposed development is still moving forward. As Mr. Sherwood just mentioned, these are definitely unprecedented times. And when I saw this staff report come out and that YouTube was perhaps requesting a pause in the specific planning process, I admittedly was concerned that perhaps it was reevaluating future paths in light of COVID, as we all have seen that the way we work and the spaces within which we work could very likely change in response to COVID. Our property in particular has been hit pretty hard with the majority of our businesses needing to be closed, especially the local shops that are not essential. We're very lucky that Molly Stone's Grocery Store, CVS Pharmacy have been able to stay open. However, this particular property is very much benefited by the great mix of both daytime and residential population that we're surrounded by. We're very excited about the potential growth of the office park around us, as potential growth is what attracts new and great tenants as businesses ebb and flow and come and go. Grocers love to see growth as that allows their business to grow as well. So what I would like to particularly comment on at this moment is, if a pause in a specific plan is the right thing to do to further and better evaluate the community benefits, both of the office as well as the residential, because I believe it makes sense to have that full picture laid out in concert with each other. We would be fully supportive of that, especially if that allows 901 Cherry to proceed forward, to allow YouTube to start construction in the near future. That opportunity for immediate growth around us, as I'm sure you can understand, would provide a tremendous amount of positive outlook for our retailers as they come out of COVID, as they try to rebuild their businesses, as we reopen in safe manners. Having that additional office space, those additional workers just across the street from us, we really think will just further the community building within the Bay Hills Office Park and the entire specific plan. So with that, I will leave my comments there. Again, thank you to all for your hard work and look forward to next steps.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands raised.
I see one just popped up.
Okay.
For Moises Vila, I'm sorry, Vieda, just one moment while I bring you in. And Moises, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Moises Vieda, and I am a resident of San Bruno and literally a neighbor of YouTube's headquarters. I'm also a field representative for Carpenters Union Local 217 in Samatelle County, here in support of these projects. The carpenters are fully in support of these projects. YouTube has made a red commitment that these projects will be built with all union labor. This will bring much-needed jobs to our community, especially as we move into uncertain times. In addition, as proven with past projects with Google and YouTube, this unit commitment will be able to provide opportunities for local residents to become apprentices and build a viable career in construction. Our recruitment efforts, working with YouTube, will have a focused emphasis on job opportunities for some of our hardest-hit populations, including people of color and women. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Okay, and we'll wait just a second to see if anybody else raises a hand. Right now, I'm not seeing any.
I don't see any either.
Okay, thank you. All right, and so then we will bring this back to the council for questions and comments and any suggestions on moving forward. So, members of the council, feel free to raise a virtual hand, a physical hand. Okay, I'll call on Councilmember Medina first.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Salazar. So how close are we to having the EIR specific plan completed? And is the intention still to pause on that as we move forward and concentrate staff's time on the Phase Two at 901 Cherry? That's my first question.
Councilmember Medina, Javon Grogan, City Manager. Based on where we are now and what we heard from the applicant YouTube, I think we need to have further conversations post tonight on how we proceed. But it does appear that we will be continuing to proceed forward with the specific plan with regard to the path forward to release the draft specific plan and EIR with incorporating the formulaic model. We do project less than two months before that document can be released. The full path to approval in all of the public meetings and bodies that the Community and Economic Development Director went through still very much need to occur. In round terms, that is typically a six-month process. Given where we are, we will, of course, try and expedite that as fast as possible and, but have the necessary public meetings and reviews take place.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Medina. Councilmember Davis, your hand is raised.
Thank you. God, I'm so excited about this project. And I, you know, COVID does make you question whether or not businesses are going to want to continue to develop and grow. I mean, we see the number of Facebook sites that have Berlin game, Mountain View, and yet, a lot of businesses are talking about working from home. Just today, I heard 18 months of COVID. We're looking through June of next year. And so to think about sort of putting a little bit of a pause on this and focusing on the 901, to really shovel-ready by next year where our economy, our local community, which is full of all labor, from electricians to carpenters to plumbers, et cetera, be able to provide job opportunities is really an exciting thing and something to really boost our economy in San Bruno. And so I understand that process. I guess my question is, is, you know, what's the process? Do you typically negotiate a community benefit at this point in the game? Or is this something that you typically wait for longer? Or is this to the right timing of that?
Councilmember Davis, yes, we do believe it's the right time. With regard to the typical process for various developments, why don't I turn that to Jason Moody from EPS? And then if we need additional information, we can reach out to some of our other consultants that are on board as well.
Yeah, so there's, the, the community benefits are usually, they're on a spectrum between negotiated and formulaic, and sometimes a little bit of both. But I would emphasize again that you have to have the community benefits defined before the specific plan is finished, because if the specific plan is finished and everybody has their entitlements, it's a voluntary agreement. So once you have your entitlement, you no longer need to participate in a community benefit package if it hasn't been defined in the specific plan. So it has to be defined at some point. We, we see it generally, if you want to do a negotiated approach, you can negotiate it and then approve it all in one big council meeting where the negotiations are all completed and the council approves the DA and the specific plan at the same time. And that's happened, for example, in Valco. That's a pretty big, heavy lift to do all at once, but it happens. The other way that we see it quite a bit is that you have these formulaic approaches built into the specific plan itself, which does create a little more cleaner process. And you also have in, in, you always have the option to do a DA afterwards. So, and in this particular case, I'm sure we would say, you know, that this is the formula, this is the starting point, but if you guys want to go to a DA and do something else, a DA, it basically opens up everything again. So that option is always on the table. But you need to have the starting point, and you want to have it defined in your specific plan, so everybody understands what the big pickets, big package looks like. I hope that enters your mind.
No, it does, thank you so much. And then my next question is, is that the $35, it's, it's not just a YouTube cost, it's any, any business owner, property owner in the Bay Hill specific plan, correct?
Yes, so $35 a square foot is for office users. And as was mentioned in the slide, the YouTube total, given the amount of property that they own within the office park and the planning area, amounts to approximately $63 million. And there's another 4.7 million dollars of additional enhancement of net new office within the planning area.
Thank you. I'm happy to hear that staff and YouTube were able to come to an agreement. And I can only imagine the amount of back and forth that had to occur to get us to this point. These aren't easy, easy discussions. These are long discussions over many, many months. And so I appreciate the work that everybody's done to get us to this point. I think that this, this development... I think that this, this development is really important. I look forward to the next phases of this project. I know the community does, but I'm really excited to get some shovel ready projects in the ground. Um, and, and the support of union labor in San Bruno to, to, to build this development. So thank you.
All right, thank you. And I see that Councilmember Mason has raised your hand, so the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to see the slide that was put up um, earlier that compared what Mountain View was getting versus what San Bruno was getting um, for the community benefit. I'm just wondering if you can um, if we could dig into that a little bit more. I know Mount, I mean, Mountain View probably when Google first started wasn't getting these amounts. Um, and I think it's important that we understand why, um, why the amount, why there's such a difference in these amounts. And hopefully maybe the consultant can go into this a little bit more.
Yeah, okay, so some of the differences here um, are just uh, related to the different site characteristics. Um, for example, the mitigations that we have, we've identified those are mitigations. You just kind of have to have those done. The other part is the existing impact fees that already exist. And Google Landings uh, is part of the, the North Bay Shore um, specific plan area. And they have very, very high impact fees in that area, which pay for a whole bunch of things. I actually did the impact fee program for them, so I, I know what it covers. But there's, it was, there was a lot of uh, specific infrastructure requirements that are needed to make development occur in that area, which are much higher than you would have, uh, than you have here. And most of that impact fee uh, is the specific area impact fee in, in the um, in that North Bay Shore area. So that's why that number is so high. Um, as for the a hundred, a hundred dollars in community benefits, um, on top of that, um, I think you kind of hit the nose on the head uh, with regard to the, the, number one, I mentioned the parking, which I think the parking is, like I said, the difference in parking requirements and parking, to build an underground parking space is a writ neighborhood of sixty five thousand dollars a space. So your parking standard is three spaces per thousand. So when you, in the, in the Google Landings parking standard is two spaces per thousand. So you have a one space per thousand increase in your parking standard here. And you also have to do with subterranean underground. So that's really equivalent to about sixty five uh, dollars a square foot of additional costs. So when you add that in, you kind of are getting closer to the, two numbers are starting to get closer to each other, the total all in amount. Um, so I think that's how I would describe it. I would again emphasize that there's a lot of differences between, you can't make apples to apples comparisons because the market context is always different between two places. Um, you know, certain, at the end of the day, you have a building and in some places you could sell the building for more than in other places. And so that does go into the calculus of a developer who's trying to understand. Um, you know, what's it worth to them to participate in this community benefit program? So that's something that's really hard to, to quantify. It's a more than intangible. Um, and we didn't try to quantify it here. Um, the staff report does mention the sixty five dollars uh, per square foot and, and parking cost. But again, that's an onsite requirement, so we didn't add it to this because that's, that's part of the building itself. And that's not typically included in a community benefit calculation. However, it is a real cost that needs to be considered.
And, and I'll add to that, that uh, within the staff report, there's an attachment that talks about uh, other community uh, benefit packages that we looked at. Uh, and as Jason said, uh, an apples to apples comparison is difficult uh, due to the unique factors on each site. Uh, but we did take a hard look at the Apple Park in Cupertino, the Facebook expansion in Menlo Park, uh, Moffett Field Towers two in Sunnyvale, and the Valco projects in Cupertino, which are highlighted in the project. Um, and others that we, 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 we looked at through sort of uh, hours and weeks of uh, research.
Okay, um. And then can we talk about, oh, and then the, on the thirty five dollars, if we're, if this is the formula for the whole plan, is that something that can be changed at a, a future date? Um, let's say that nothing is built for fifteen years on part of this plan. I mean, the amount might be higher, it might be lower, I don't know, but how, um, how easy would it be to change that thirty five dollars later?
So um, thirty five dollars a square foot, uh, if, if approved will be uh, with, will be what's approved in the specific plan. There is always the option for a property owner to have a negotiated amount uh, due to unique circumstances in, in the future. Um, and in theory, there is always amount, uh, there's always the ability to amend a specific plan uh, in the, later on. Typically, that does not happen because what you want to provide is certainty to property owners and developers. When you uh, essentially undertake this, at, at this point, for your effort uh, to identify what the full build out will be in the area over twenty years by going through this process and then the, the subsequent um, public processes through the, all the various bodies. It really provides a level of, of confidence uh, for uh, ownership and investment. And so typically you do not see uh, these type of plans amended um, over time.
Okay. So the other, um, I had another question about the jobs. Um, one of the speakers said that it'll bring local jobs. Um, I'm actually really happy to, to hear that uh, YouTube is going to be hiring uh, union labor. Um, my question is, uh, will there be a program set up for San Bruno residents? Skyline College residents, CAP graduates um, to go into the hiring program? Local, like a local hiring program essentially is what I'm asking about.
So at this point, uh, when uh, we are doing a specific and, a specific plan and really talking about entitlements, uh, those conversations uh, are not had. Um, once projects are proposed, um, is typically when uh, a property owner uh, may mention uh, a local hire program or, or something uh, to that nature. But we have not had those conversations right now because what we are really talking about uh, is allowable uh, entitlements, the allowable uh, square, square footage that uh, could be built in a, in, in a specific area.
And is that something that, um, that, that is being entertained? I guess by um, by YouTube or by the unions, or has that conversation even started at all?
So the best person to answer uh, that question uh, would be the applicant. And so if they are uh, available, we can uh, go to the applicant for a response to that question.
That'd be great.
All right, and it looks like we have Drew's uh, hand raised. So Melissa, will you bring him in?
Yes, I received. Am I, am I on the call now?
Yeah, Drew, if you can hear me.
I can, I can hear you. I received some.
We're having a hard time hearing you.
Let me switch to a different set of headphones.
Okay.
While we're waiting for Drew to uh, get uh, squared away there, I, I just, I'd, I'd like to ask that we stay focused more on the topic that, that is really at, at discussion today, which really has to do with the benefits package and not get too into the weeds on the other things. Those things will be coming back to us as we move farther along in, in the project. So if we can just try to keep it focused, uh, I would appreciate it. All right, so Drew, are you uh, with us?
Mama, can you join my picnic?
I can't.
It's picnic time.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I have a quick question.
Yes, Ms. uh, Councilmember Medina.
Um, it's regarding the thirty five dollar a square foot and um, is that price uh, tagged along with uh, the CPI as, as inflation goes up, that it automatically goes up? And we don't have to keep on coming back and, and trying to change it? With inflation?
Uh, yes, uh, it does have a CPI inflator uh, attached to it.
Okay, and um, and I'm sorry, uh, uh, Councilmember Mason still had the floor. She was waiting for an answer to her question. So um, I'll, I'll uh, uh, recognize her again. And if Drew can respond to her question. And if we still don't have him, then I will ask uh, Councilmember Mason to perhaps move on to any other questions.
So I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that you can hear me now.
Yes.
Excellent. I might work for a technology company, but I'm in real estate, not in tech support. So thanks for bearing with my problems. Uh, so to, first is to speak to, to Linda's questions. You know, we are, we're, we're really proud of some of the initiatives we've been able to undertake over the last few years where we've strengthened our partnership with San Bruno. Uh, you know, we've done extensive work with this, with the, not only the San Bruno uh, school district, but also Skyline College with events like Portrait of a Graduate, where we've really worked at helping to work with the local uh, school community at all levels to, to help people cultivate skills and talents to prepare them for, for uh, the future jobs in uh, in not only the tech economy, but for other aspects of that economy. Uh, being able to participate in resume reviews and doing mock interviews up at Skyline College uh, in the past year. Uh, we had the, the honor of doing that in partnership with uh, with Honorable Mayor Rico Medina. Uh, helping to prepare graduates, you know, for the process, not only to be, get the skills for a job, but to, to really work their way through all the other processes and soft skills that enable them to be equipped. And so we look forward to amplifying those programs and trying to do what we can to ensure that as, like we said, as we grow in San Bruno, that San Bruno thrives. And that has to be followed through with our commitment to partnering with education opportunities early in the school year, as well as when candidates are ready for, for job roles. So uh, let's explore those opportunities together as we continue to strengthen the partnership.
Thank you. And Drew, while I think while you're on, I think there was a discussion about more pausing and the, and we've had, and this whole meeting is about, can just hopefully moving forward with community benefits. I was hoping you can just um, talk a little bit about um, how YouTube is framing uh, COVID nineteen space for the future. I know that there's been talk with uh, residents around, you know, everybody's working from home. Is that going to be forever? And I think it might help to, to, to know that uh, this plan really is looking at COVID and framing around what the future will look like.
Yeah, absolutely. I totally understand the question and it's, and it comes from, it comes from the right place. And now I think at, at this point, you know, projecting what the future may be with such a dynamic public health crisis that we're facing. You know, I, I can't project when we're going to be able to return to the office. You know, we took a very early step in transitioning to work from home for a number of reasons. And obviously, one of those was to keep our staff safe. But additionally, we knew that since we had the capacity to enable work from home, that if our staff remained safe, that we would not overburden and overwhelm a public health system that does have capacity constraints. And when we looked out at essential workers and, and public health workers that were going to be absolutely critical to supporting us all through this crisis, we in no way wanted to contribute to uh, hospital capacity challenges or, or other elements that would, that would really hurt our response and our community's response to this crisis. So we did transition early to a work from home posture. You know, but that said, like, we're a culture that believes in the power of space and the power of our office environments to drive innovation and collaboration. And trust me, every day I hear from our population wondering, when are we going to be able to return? And you know, that question is only answered by when is it going to be safe to return? Since, you know, unfortunately COVID drives the schedule and, and not the desires of us coming back to the office. So I'd love to be able to answer that, but this current status is just way too dynamic for us to predict. But we all look forward to being able to come back and, and use our office spaces to drive continued, you know, uh, collaboration and innovation in the future.
Thank you. Um, aside from that, thank you for the report to staff and for the, I think it was pretty detailed. Um, and thank you for YouTube, just for working with the city through this process. Um, and I would support um, option two as far as our direction to um, to our city manager. Thank you. And thanks to all the staff. I know that you guys have been working on this nonstop as the planning commissioner. So thank you.
And so I, um, Councilmember Medina, I, I don't know if you had anything else. I, I lowered your hand. But I'll, I'm gonna give you the floor back in case you had anything else to add.
Sure, I, I, I uh, thank you for that, Vice Mayor Salazar. Um, I too am in support of option two. Um, I do appreciate all the work that uh, has been spent over, over the years to, to get us to this point. And I'm glad that we were able to, to work out uh, an option that uh, enables uh, this to go forward. And that, that as an additional bonus, it, it, it says a lot that YouTube's willing to work with labor. In, in this pandemic, San Bruno is moving forward. San Bruno is perfectly positioned to be so attractive to, to businesses and, and, and development. So um, we will be mindful of development. And through this process with, with the specific plan of the EIR, that's, that's, will assure it. So uh, I'm in favor of moving forward with this. Thank you.
Okay, and Councilmember Davis, you have your hand raised, so the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Um, I just wanted to make a couple of points, and that is that, you know, I just wanted to thank YouTube because the opportunity for Cappuccino students and Skyline students to participate in their internships um, has always been, um, has always been there. Um, I'm sorry, apprenticeships have always been there. And so I can only imagine that will continue and become better and, and grow further. And then, and then the other uh, um, comment I want to make is that, you know, YouTube's always been about reaching out to San Bruno to ask, what can we do for you, the city, versus us trying to reach out to them. Um, and so they have done a number of things for our community and will continue to do. And so, you know, although this is one specific agreement on this development, they're here long term, and I hope they continue to stay here long term. And we really appreciate the thing that they've done and have given back to our community that touch all of us in so many ways. So, so thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And uh, I, I'm not going to repeat everything uh, we've heard, but uh, I, I agree that this um, this whole project is uh, it's, it's very important to the city. And um, strengthening the partnership that we have with YouTube is, is also important. So I am glad that we were able to uh, come to a, a resolution that's mutually um, agreeable to everyone. Uh, it's glad to hear that our, our friends in labor are on board. That's also very important. Not all of our projects run that smoothly with, with that level of support. So it is nice to hear that we have that in this case. I'm also uh, supportive of staff's recommendation on this. Uh, I see Councilmember Medina, you've raised your hand, so I will recognize you.
Yes, I apologize. I, I said the number two in the option. But, but the idea is with the staff's recommendation, with the, with the uh, formulaic, uh, that's an interesting word, formulaic uh, process. So that, that's uh, what I'm in favor of. I apologize for the uh, we're speaking earlier.
Yeah, I, and I, I appreciate the clarification. So um, with that, it looks like we have unanimous uh, support from the council to move forward with staff's recommendation. So uh, City Manager, any uh, further direction or questions from you or your staff?
No, um, Vice Mayor Salazar, just uh, to clarify, uh, Councilmember Mason said option two. Uh, and then uh, Councilmember Medina clarified uh, option one. So why don't I bring that up on the screen just so we can have uh, clarification? Because uh, if, if we're unanimous, I want to make sure that we are all um, uh, saying the same thing. So option one is to establish a formulaic uh, community benefit approach and incorporate it as an integral part of the specific plan based on a set dollar amount. Uh, and the staff recommendation is thirty five dollars per square foot, uh, which we uh, heard from YouTube uh, today that they uh, are in agreement with. Uh, option two is defer publication of the specific plan in an EIR until a specific community benefits program is negotiated. And that may or may not include a formulaic model. It may include something else. Uh, and so uh, where, uh, what the staff recommendation is to proceed with option one. I think given where we are now, we will um, have uh, subsequent conversations with YouTube uh, and proceed forward with uh, the nine oh one cherry entitlements as well as uh, uh, finalizing the Bay Hill specific plan and uh, beginning uh, the release of the draft documents and those public uh, meetings. And so with that, um, uh, I, I want to make sure uh, where all council members are uh, on option one and option two. And again, option one is the recommended approach.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I, I did uh, misspeak there. So uh, so I, I think we got a clarification from Councilmember Medina that he is favoring staff's recommendation. Uh, Councilmember Davis, uh, you're also. Councilmember Davis, you're also in favor of staff's recommendation. And Councilmember Mason, you said Option Two. So are you in support of that?
I'm sorry, it's Option Two in the staff report on page four of nine. Your, our Option Two in the staff report is your Option One. So I'll just say I'm supporting the formulaic community benefit approach, which is staff's recommendation.
Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, so, City Manager Grogan, you have your direction.
Thank you.
Okay, and being that that was our only item for discussion tonight, unless there are other comments from the council. Okay, in that case, we will move on to adjournment. And as a reminder, our regular meeting of August 11th was canceled. And so we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, which is August 25th at 7:00 PM. Everybody stay safe, thank you.
Thanks, everybody, good night.
Thank you, good night.